City of Salem, Massachusetts. The City Council Committee on Administration and Finance, co-hosted with the Committee of the Hall, met in the council chamber on June 11, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of discussing the matters of the fiscal year 25 operating budget, meetings, and capital improvement plans for the Veterans Department, finance, including collector, assessor, purchasing, administration and fixed costs, the treasurer, administration, debt assessments, short and long-term debt, insurance and finance, including finance and the budget transfers out, and also capital improvement plans. Joining us tonight from the Administration Finance Committee are Councilors Prozynski, Councilor Jerslow, and Councilor Stott. And also from the Committee of the Hall, we have Councilors Cohen and Councilors Marsillo. And also joining us tonight is Kim Emmerling, our Veterans Agent, Stephen Cortez, our Director of Assessing, Bonnie Sealy, our Collector, Kristin Lindberg, City Treasurer, and Anthony Delaney, our Chief Procurement Officer, Purchasing. We also have Anna Friedman, our Finance Director, Justin McCutcheon, our Deputy Finance Director, and Mayor Pengalo joining us. And welcome, everyone. These public meetings are for the financial review of best practice and to learn about the departments and how they utilize funds. To view the full budget, please go to SalemMA.gov/FY25. And the homepage also includes, towards the bottom of the mayor's statement, a link to the Budget in Brief, which is a helpful summary. When you come up to present, please tell us about what your department does, anything you'd like to highlight, any significant changes in your budget, and if there are any capital projects you'd like to discuss. Thank you. And we will be starting tonight with Kim Emmerling, our Veterans Agent. And this is in Section 25, and the budget summary is on page 621. And welcome, Mr. Emmerling.
Thank you very much. Just get right into it.
Right into it.
Okay, so as the Director of Veteran Services for the city here, I'm charged primarily with responsibility for Chapter 115 benefits, which are a social umbrella for low-income veterans and widows of veterans, independents if there are any. And those are managed through my office, a lot of paper flown around. But if everything's done accordingly, then the city will be reimbursed 75 cents on the dollar next year during the general, goes right to the general fund. So in addition to that, I'm responsible for coordination of the Veterans Day events and Memorial Day events and any other sort of military-related event. I do not run the Salem muster. I just help along. The Guard does that. And also, a large part of my job is really the VA claims and healthcare enrollment, that VA healthcare enrollment that comes into my office for veterans that haven't been taking advantage of those benefits. So that's a large part of my responsibility as well. So the budget here, there are no major changes to my budget. A couple of increases here and there, but mostly in personnel. The Chapter 115 budget is pretty much stable. And this year, we should really close out almost to the dollar what we sort of projected at the beginning of the year. And that's a hit or miss thing because you never know who's going to come into the office and needing those benefits. But, you know, we've managed, you know, people come and people go. But it's sort of stabilized over the last year, so we're almost right on mark for what we projected last year.
Great, thank you. Yes, I very value the work that you do. I know how important you are to the veterans community, and I have your informational copies and everything else that you do. Thank you. It's very much appreciated. Any questions from the council? Councilor Prozynski?
First, Kim, I want to say thank you for everything that you do for the veterans of this city. I'm the liaison to the Veterans Council for the first time, and I've really been an eye-opener about exactly what our Veterans Agent is doing for each individual person. Nobody goes unnoticed. Our homeless veterans aren't homeless, thanks to you. You've been able to find them someplace and place them someplace. And, you know, hats off for all the hoops that you've done to do this. People don't realize how much you do.
Thank you.
I have a question. The recent, the PACT Act, has that affected your workload? You may want to explain what that is. And because it seems like more on your shoulders now.
Right, right. So I probably should have put that on the accomplishments, but, or changes in the office because the PACT Act is a federal legislation that greatly hits the greatest expansion of VA benefits and healthcare, you know, benefits in our history. It passed about a year and a half ago, and it has really expanded the workload for a lot of, all the VSOs around this, around this state and the others that work in the veteran community. And essentially, it just expanded a lot of presumptives for Agent Orange exposure and toxics, toxin exposures and various, expanded the various locations around the world that, you know, now the VA has recognized and have caused significant harm. So, yes, it's greatly expanded. Even just fielding questions over the last year and a half, it's just, a lot of questions come in, and I take the opportunity to do an intake with them, even though they don't know it, just by asking questions to figure out exactly what benefit. They might be asking about one thing, but they might be eligible for many other things by the time I get done speaking with them. And, right, so the claims, Camp Lejeune water contamination greatly, you know, that came under the PACT Act. And we've, you know, I don't have the number on top of my head, but it's greatly expanded the VA compensation claims that I've tried to manage through the system. And it's been about a year and a half, and so now the VA has come back with some denials or, and other things. So I'm working a lot of those now, just trying to get the appeals done correctly and through the system. And, you know, it's just a big paperwork shuffle, you know, dealing with the VA, but it certainly increased the workload for all the VSOs around the state. So, yes.
So in this community, we've seen an increase in the claims?
Yes.
And the questions on it?
Yes.
Who helps you with that?
So I'm the primary. My assistant in the office, she just, she works mostly the 115 cases that we have. And, I mean, I do the initial intake, and then she sort of manages all the paperwork for the 115 and tracks that and getting the bills paid through the city. But mostly the VA claims, that's all, that's all on me.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
I might want to just interject, the HERO Act is currently making its way through the state legislature later, legislation. And it's passed the House, it's going to be coming through the Senate, I think this week, actually. And it's going to be signed off by the governor because she's the one that proposed it when she first came in. So, and that's going to expand a lot of benefits as well for local and state veterans, veterans around the, you know, the state. So that'll generate a little more work as well. I look forward to that.
That's, oh. Thank you. That's great news. Councilor Marsillo?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Kim. I just had two questions. The first one is the ground maintenance expenditure. What is that for?
So it's mostly for decoration of the cemeteries around the city and the monuments and, you know, restoration of some of the monuments that need to be redone or cleaned up, essentially.
And my second question is, I'm hoping you can take the opportunity to talk about housing for homeless veterans. And I think we hear a lot in the city about the homeless issues that we're facing. And there's been claims that many of the homeless are veterans and they're not getting services. And I'm not, I just want you to take the opportunity to talk about the process and how you work with the Community Impact Unit and, like, how that all works.
So about 10 or so years ago, there was a big push by the federal government to eliminate veteran homelessness. So to that end, there are several major programs at the VA that are geared towards reducing homelessness. And to be quite honest with you, they are very effective if the veterans do in their part. There's a lot that can be done, and they can get them on Section 8 voucher essentially pretty quickly if they're a homeless veteran. Here in the community, of course, I am, I try and stay involved with the Community Impact Team to make sure that there aren't any veterans or families in distress or homeless veterans and stay in touch with LifeBridge. I encourage them to always call me directly if there's somebody that is a veteran or thinks they're a veteran. Let me sort it out and establish that first, and then I can go on to find out what benefits might be available to them. And then homeless, I can camp in that we had and the various places for that. You know, I try and get in there every once in a while, at least once a quarter or once a month, preferably, but try and walk through there, let them know I'm not a firefighter or a police officer. I just work for the city and I'm looking for veterans. And I hear all kinds of stories, and I walk out of there with more work. Some are veterans and some aren't, but if they are, we do everything we can, the police department, myself, and in VA, because there's a lot of different ways to get them, to get them a voucher pretty, pretty quickly. And there are some temporary housing buildings over in Beverly that we can take advantage of. If there's, if there's an opening, they can get there and get housed, and they can lock their gear and then still be eligible for the voucher to get them on a more permanent basis, housed on a more permanent basis.
Is the, is the temporary housing in Beverly for veterans, specifically for veterans?
There's a couple of houses over there. One of them is, it's a white, it's New England Counseling Center. It's next to the post office there. It's about an 18-unit house, you know, that was kitted out just for standalone rooms. They have a TV, a small kitchenette, bathroom, they're all, they're all self, you know, and contained. And if there's an opening over there, I speak to Lynn over there all the time, if there's an opening in the veterans, all he needs is 214, walk over there, she reads them the right act, what's acceptable, what isn't, and then they can, they can get a key that day if there's an availability, and they can get in there. And again, that doesn't, that's not considered, it's kind of a battle we go back and forth with, with the VA about what is that. It's not permanent housing, so they're still eligible for the VASH voucher, the Section 8 voucher given through the, through the VA. So they could be there for a couple of weeks, a couple of months. Some are there longer, but I think Lynn likes it over there because they don't cause a lot of problems and they offer some stability over there. But it's on a rotating basis, and we can get them in and out of there pretty quickly. And they can secure their, their gear, and it's a really great opportunity. And the other building over there is 62 Pleasant Street, and that's just filled up with veterans that have these Section 8 vouchers. And so they can, you know, once they get in there, they can stay there for as long as they want.
So the, the Section 8 vouchers come from the VA?
Right. It's under a program called VASH for Veterans Assisted Supportive Housing. And they're essentially Section 8 vouchers, but coordinated through the VA. So they, they can't really change the basic rules, but they can, they get expedited a whole lot faster than, you know, just the civilian coming in, trying to get a Section 8 voucher, which currently, right now in Salem, I think is about a 10-year wait or something.
Yeah. So, so what is it generally for a wait for veterans?
I've seen them two or three months, or six or eight months, but generally within a year.
Less than a year, right.
Yes, yeah. And again, that would be temporary housing over there, or LifeBridge, even temporary housing. And, you know, we just, everybody does whatever they can to get them housed, networked into the VA, a couple of phone calls so they can be down there, getting in, getting their intake done, and, you know, getting all the documentation lined up. So, you know, that part can happen pretty quickly. And then there are supportive services, so there's wraparound services for that veteran. So if they're, you know, get them housed first, fine, and then, you know, find them some quality work, you know, get their vehicles fixed or whatever, you know, whatever they need to be successful.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that. Councilor Jerslow?
I just had a comment. The first time I met you, Kim, you just came onto the Veteran Services. I was still working with the police, and we had a veteran that got in a little trouble. And Jim Gothy is the one that said to me, "Call Kim Emmerling, he'll come down." You came right down to the booking room, you sat with the veteran, got all his information, and you got him the services he needed. So I've seen you work firsthand, and thank you for everything you do.
You're welcome. And, you know, so that's why I try and stay in close contact with the community, because it's a community effort. And as soon as I hear about it, and, you know, try and mitigate it before it gets worse and they get dragged into the courts, and that just makes it worse.
Councilor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, not being a member of the committee, through you, to veterans, a officer. We're really lucky to have you here. You know, I've talked to people in other communities and wish you, and they wish you were there. So thanks for staying here. So I just want to give an example of one of the kind of, one of the things you do. We had a house burned down in, in my ward, and some of the people couldn't qualify for some of the money that was raised in the community because the landlord wouldn't acknowledge the person lived there. And I talked to everyone, Julio and I did. And one of the people who lived there said that this particular resident was a veteran. And when I spoke to him, he didn't actually, he'd been through a lot, remember that he was. And I called you up, and you said, "I'll take care of it," and you did. And really an example of how you, you know, did the research and found out and helped someone who, if he was left to his own, probably would, you know, be lost somewhere. Thank you.
Right. It's been my pleasure. It really is. This is, for a veteran, this is one of the best jobs there is out here. I'm glad the mayor kept me on. For now.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, Councilor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Veterans Budget Personnel Line Item of $147,225, Expenditure Line Item of $410,800, for a department total of $558,025.
Second.
Thank you. Councilor Stott motions to approve the personnel budget in the amount of $147,225, and the expenditures budget in the amount of $410, $410,800, for a Veterans Department total of $558,025, seconded by Councilor Prozynski. All in favor? Okay, let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries. Four to none.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you. Next, we'll be moving on to, under, under Finance, Section 4, Collector's Office. So it's Section 4, and the budget summary's on page 335. And welcome, Ms. Sealy.
Thank you.
Give us one second to get to the page here. And welcome.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to offer about the position?
Well, I'm not nearly as cool as Kim is, so now, I shouldn't have gone afterwards because it's a little embarrassing. But basically, we're located downstairs, where the Collector's Office. So we collect all tax payments, real estate, personal property, motor vehicle excise, boat excise, water and sewer bills, and trash fees, city ordinance tickets, pretty much anything that's billed out gets collected through our office. We also do passports, so if anybody knows of anybody looking for a passport, I'll always send them our way. We don't do pictures like they do at the post office, but other than that, we can do the whole process. So that's a really good service that we offer because there's not many places that do it in city halls anymore, and the post offices are getting really backed up. So we do try to put it out there as much as we can, but any kind of social media or whatever that you might have that you can put out on is always helpful. They do call and make appointments, and we take them every day of the week. So, yeah, any kind of information you can get on that would be great. We don't really have any changes in our office this year. I expect it to remain with the same personnel as we have. I just got back from our annual school down the Cape to maintain my certification, and my assistant will go in August, and she retains her certification as well. So we do that annually. Everyone in the office, the two clerks up front, and both myself and my assistant, are certified to take passports. We have to do an annual certification every year to keep doing that. So we do that as well. And I don't, unfortunately, we have a very tiny little budget, so I don't think I have much to say. As far as municipal lien certificates, you can see with the numbers, they've gone down significantly. That would be because mortgage rates have gone up so high, so people aren't refinancing the way they were. And MLCs are just when people are either buying property or refinancing property. So it would make sense now that, with the groove that we're in, that we wouldn't be getting as many. So that has been down, although our passports have continued to steadily go up, so that's good. But I would really like to see, you know, offer this service to more people. It's not just Salem that we do it for, it can be any community. They can come and have it done with us, so.
That's, that's great to know. Around how many do you get for processing a passport?
Right now, we did 325 this year. So we probably have maybe four weeks sometimes, something like that. I mean, not a real lot. A lot of families do come in, though, to have them done, so. And the passport time's not as bad as they were for a while. It was taking a real long time to get a passport. But we're back down to, that was kind of after COVID because they didn't really have the staffing. But we're back to regular timing now, so you can get it pretty much five to six weeks, so.
Wow, that's a great service and a big number. Yeah, thank you. And it's good to know. Any questions from the council? No? Okay, so we're on page 335. Councilor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the Collector Budget Personnel Line Item of $274,883, Collector Expenditure Line Item of $8,300, for a department total of $283,183.
Second.
Thank you. So Councilor Stott motions to approve the Personnel Budget for $274,883, the expenditures in the amount of $8,300, for a Collector Department Total of $283,183, seconded by Councilor Prozynski. All in favor? Yes, I'll let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries. Four to none. And thank you.
Thank you.
And to your department as well. Appreciate you. Section 3, the Assessors. The Assessor's Office, and this is Stephen Cortez. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilors, Mayor, Anna. The FY25 budget proposal for the Assessing Department has not changed much from last year, with an overall increase of 2.79%, with less than 1% for expenditures and 3.18% in salaries due to union contracts and salary surveys. Before I go over the assessing budget requests, I want to share a brief synopsis of the duties and responsibilities of the Assessing Department before I begin. The Assessing Department operates on a cyclical basis, most notably with our evaluations and inspections. However, our duties essentially remain the same from year to year. The assessors are required by Mass General Law to value all real and personal property and prepare tax billing commitments for real and personal property, motor vehicle and boat excise tax. The Assessing Department staff consists of two principal clerks, two assistant assessors, one director of assessing, along with three board members. Our daily routine includes assisting the customers with inquiries, abatements, and exemptions, inspection scheduling, address changes, deed updating, identifying parcel changes, and updating the city tax maps, just to name a few. Also, for some of the new council members and anyone watching, the Assessing Department oversees new growth tax dollars, which are used to help raise the levy limit, which is used to pay for the city's budget and other articles approved. For FY24, 57% of the budget was funded by the tax levy. The remainder came from state aid, local receipt, enterprise and CPA funds, and other revenues. And lastly, we put extensive work into our portion of the website, which goes into great detail regarding the assessment process, the inspection process, and the legal timelines for filing for abatements and exemptions. I recommend that anyone listening, please visit our portion of the site, especially for the personal exemptions that are offered for individuals who could possibly benefit with help in paying their tax bills. Starting with the salaries and stipends line, there have been no staff changes this fiscal year. We start fully staffed. Personnel lines reflect cost of living adjustments and salary survey adjustments. There's Assessor's stipends for Massachusetts Certified Assessors Designations. We also have a shared vehicle, but we include a $500 mile reimbursement line, as at times both assessors might be out on the road during inspection and one would have to use a personal vehicle. There is also an adjustment from previous fiscal years on the stipend line due to a correction from what object line it should be coming out of. Upon research and salary surveys for assessing professionals, I found that we are low and inconsistent with the going rate compared to our counterparts in neighboring communities. This is important to update to retain our qualified assessors and prevent them from being poached by communities with vacancies onto the expenditures. Here, I cleaned up and consolidated the descriptions, so that's why they might seem in different places. Our contract service line is where we pay for the majority of our functional operating expenses, such as maintenance fees for our Patriot Property Success Pro, that's our computer-assisted mass appraisal system, legal counsel regarding ATP cases and TIF agreements, tax billing, and sales analysis work plan, our three appraisal reports mandated by the DOR for sale and personal property utility companies, and our software subscription, some of which costs have changed due to the changing market and inflation. Between the approved 24 budget and the 25 mayor's budget is a 0.31% decrease from last year. Printing and binding, this line is used to pay for binding and printing of tax commitment books, envelopes, assessing forms, letterheads, and business cards. The printing of the maps include tax maps, neighborhood maps, zoning maps, and there is no change in this budget line. Office supplies line, this is a pretty much self-explanatory expense line, where we cover the cost of supplies as needed, water, printer, toner, paper, stationery, accessory, fieldwork equipment. There is no change to this budget line as well. And state and travel meetings, out of this budget line comes our dues for courses, workshops, and seminars that are vital for the assessors, clerks, and board members in the department to stay abreast of all the latest legal changes in Mass General Law and procedures and requirements. Every year, the professional meetings and dues for the Massachusetts Association of Assessing Officers and the Essex County Assessing Association goes up. Two years ago, we filled the vacant position of Assistant Assessor. With that, in order to hold his position, he must obtain the MWA designation by attending courses and workshops. Some of those courses are multiple days and are held in municipalities far from Salem. The clerks and the assessors with designations must also attend meetings to keep our designation standing as members. Request an increase to $4,075. In conclusion, the assessing budget has fairly increased due to changes in the market and inflation. The Assessing Department is tasked with many duties, all of which factor down to calculating the tax amount, which a city can levy to support the budget you approve. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And also, yes, you had mentioned the change in the stipends here, and, but I didn't quite catch what you covered, that that increased. It was a change of, yeah, how they're allocated?
Yes. If you look at the FY24 adopted to 25s, it looks a bit much. Yes, if you look at the FY '24 adopted to '25s, it looks a bit much, but that's because it was from a different line last year.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council? Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Through you to Mr. Cortez, a similar question along the stipends. I think I asked this last year, but I honestly don't remember how to answer. The stipends for the board members, that's a large portion of that line item. Is that like in our ordinance or state code that they receive those stipends? Do you know?
Yes, it is. It is a, I believe the city's ordinance for the board members to receive a stipend.
It's a city ordinance, okay. How often does your board meet? Quarterly?
No, so although they do meet quarterly, they meet more often so in the month of February because that's when we have abatement and exemption processing. During that month, they have to decide. They help us with determining whether someone is granted or denied. So they meet, I want to say, almost every week in the month of February and then it trickles off in March and April. However, they do come in for meetings regarding constituents' concerns and inquiries which they request to speak to board members, so.
Thank you. I got my letter this week, actually.
Building permit?
I got, I did have one other question about the Munis tax bill implementation that you were requesting. Is that new software that you were requesting that wasn't approved or what was that?
Well, that was for, so Munis is, I believe originally a software for accounting and it was really never really made for tax generating purposes. So there has been glitches in the past in the software unexpectedly to us. And it's actually not only us, but other municipalities. So I was requesting money for implementation. Implementation means that the software company actually will generate the bills and then if there's any kind of glitches that they know about, they can handle them and they have the in-house tech support. So I won't have to call and, you know, wait for an email back. They have it in-house. They can just, you know, fix those issues that they know about.
Any other ques, oh, yes. Ms. Raymond?
Just to follow up on Mr. Cortez's details on that, we're still looking internally for some other resources potentially to help with that because we have been having challenges with our software. As noted, other communities are. We're actually quite frustrated, as are many other communities, with some changes that they've made that have been leading to some issues with overrun bills. And so we've been looking at other, several options to provide more support there because it has turned into a unusually large lift for something that was always a lot of work but is now more complicated. So we're, it's not supposed to be funded here, but we are looking at other options, whether it's different types of support, consultant or otherwise, to assist with that.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Masillo.
Thank you, Chair. Can you help me, exemptions and abatements? Which one is the senior?
Exemptions.
Exemptions. So those have gone down quite a bit since 2021, right?
So actually, so I know on the budget book that you got, there was estimates because at the time that they were being filled out, we had not completed receiving all the exemptions yet. So I have the updated numbers. In 2022, there was 318 exemptions for local programs and deductions. In 2023, there was 283. And in '24, 325.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I believe there was an asterisk and so.
Yeah, but you, so in here it says 296 for 2023, but you're saying it was 283, but then.
Correct, because at that time there was, yeah.
That's good to know that it bumped back up. That's, that's good. How many, how many applications do you get and which, how, what percentage are accepted or?
Okay. There's a very slim number that is denied. I would say the ones who are denied are due to, you know, they're not, so if there's a trust, they have to be a beneficiary and they have to be the trustee. So they may not qualify because of one of those. Another instance is they fail to supply their state federal tax returns. A lot of people don't want to give that up and that's required when we determine if you're eligible for an exemption. One of the clauses that are not for disabled veteran excluding those.
And does the, does your office send out, how do you, how do you advertise this?
So we go to the Council on Aging in September and we have a presentation that we give. We also correspond with Kim Emmerling, so he also tells the disabled veterans. We give him the list so he knows who's on there and who's not, so he can verify if he has more. And then we also have our website, which is loaded and I'm proud of it because I worked hard on it and it has a lot of information that it clearly states everything, so.
You just have to know where to find it. So that's, that's my only.
Yale.com for certain exemptions.
I know, I know. You have to know to go to the, I get it, we're working on that. Okay, I would love to see the city do an information push in the fall on this program just to, just to catch other people who aren't connected with the Council on Aging and the Veteran Services, but, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Collin?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, not being a member of the committee, to Director Cortez. We talked about this a couple of years ago. If you could talk about the process of how property owners get new assessments or reassessed, you know, perhaps there's a addition onto the property or, you know, they need to get an electro permit to upgrade their electric for solar or something else. But there's a lot of things that, do you work with all the departments that issue permits? Do they notify you so that you can decide whether you're going to send someone out? Could you talk about that a little bit?
Yes. So we are involved with the building department as well. We get reports from them that we can pull from their system whenever there is a permit taken out. We send out letters to request inspections for permitted work. Some of the ways that people's assessment change, assessments change is due to permitted work, but that's not all necessary. It's based on the market as well. So sure, you can have an addition and that will add value to your property, but also we're looking at the market too. So we're lowering and raising the tables based on the market. We have to reflect the market as a snapshot of time. So that changes along with whether a property has been maintained, updated, or has gone the opposite way as well. We are mandated by the DOR to attempt to inspect every property in the city every 10 years. So we send out cyclical inspection request letters for that as well. And that is also helpful. I want to say that there is a unfounded thought that the assessors are out to, you know, get as much money as the city can, but that's by making assessments higher, but that, that's not necessarily true. And that's when I tell constituents over the phone that, or email or at the counter, it could be benefiting you if we do an inspection because if we see that your property hasn't been inspected in over 30 years and you haven't done nothing to it, you know, it's probably going to reflect that. So yes, to answer your question, we use the building department and we use our own letters that we send out to try to inspect properties and, and that's just a little bit of how we assess property.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? No? Okay, so the budget summary for this is on page 328. Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the assessors budget personnel line item of $377,693. Expenditure line item of $71,445 for department total of $449,138.
Second.
Thank you. So Counselor Stott motions to approve the assessors personnel budget for $377,693. The expenditures total in the amount of $71,445 for an assessors department total of $449,138. Seconded by Counselor Pozniewski. All those in favor? Let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries. Four to, four to zero.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Appreciate you. Next, we are moving on to purchasing and that begins at section six. Welcome, Anthony Delaney.
Thank you.
Let me just take one second to get to, okay, so yeah, and we'll be starting with general administration and that begins right at the beginning of section six.
Should I start?
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name's Anthony Delaney. I'm the chief procurement officer for the city. The purchasing department handles all requisitions, purchase orders for all city departments, including the schools. We're responsible for ensuring compliance with state, local and federal laws on all procurements. We also manage the vendor records for the city, including issuing 1099s in January to all of our vendors. We report to state and federal authorities on our, on our spend and on our contracts. We approve requisitions for all goods, services and construction related activities. We also administer the copiers and paper for certain departments in city hall and the annex.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council? No? Oh, Counselor Collin?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, not being a member of the committee to, to you. I just want to express gratitude for your work in the working group on the wage shift ordinance. Since the state only has 11 or 12 communities that have them, it's unbelievable that you work for one that does. And I'm assuming that the new contracts have, you know, the, the question about debarment, have you received any resistance to that or?
I have not received any resistance. I have also not received any information. I had one person who inquired about the process for making a complaint, didn't identify it if she had any specific vendor or contract in mind, but other than one inquiry about process, I've been captured neither pushback nor activation of the, of the question.
Well, it's just really important that it's there in case something, you know, comes to light in the future, we'll know that they had declared.
Very, very much agreed. We have a number of, I mean, the wage shift ordinance covers all industries, but I think we're especially concerned about construction and we have a number of high profile building projects coming up. I'm glad it's there and I'm very grateful that my department was consulted on the development of the ordinance.
Yeah, and like I said, you are really terrific, your knowledge of it and as, as much as the community sees, you know, restaurants and others in violation, it's actually more prevalent in the trades, like you said. So I really want to thank you and the mayor for setting up the working group, but thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Yes, agreed. Thank you. Yes, so important to have in place. Any other questions? Okay, so we are starting with purchasing, the general administration, which has the budget summary on page 349. Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the purchasing general administration budget personnel line item of $189,869. Expenditure line item of $23,725 for department total of $213,594.
Second.
Thank you. So Counselor Stott motions to approve the purchasing general administration personnel budget in the amount of $189,869. The expenditures in the amount of $23,725 for a purchasing general administration department total of $213,594. Seconded by Counselor Pozniewski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries. Four to none. And next we are moving on to under purchasing, same section, fixed costs, and the budget summary is on page 352. Is there any comment on this or any questions from the council? No? Okay, then we will move on to the fixed cost budget summary. And it's just expenditures.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the purchasing fixed cost expenditure line item of $39,181 for department total of purchasing fixed cost expenditures of $39,181.
Second.
Counselor Stott motions to approve the purchasing fixed cost expenditures for $39,181, which is also the department total, just expenditures, $39,181. Seconded by Counselor Pozniewski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. Matter carries. Four to none. And thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you very much.
You too. And next we have Kristin Lindberg and this is for section seven, treasurers. And we are going to start with the general administration. And again, that is section seven.
Good evening, everyone. So the treasurer's office, the primary function is to preserve, protect and manage the financial resources of the city by taking responsibility for the receipt, deposit, dispersment and dispersment of city funds in accordance with mass general laws and local ordinances. This means that every dollar that comes in and goes out of the city flows through the treasurer's office. We process all departmental turnovers by receiving the money and preparing and making the bank deposit. We also process all departmental turnovers where the revenue is collected from other sources such as credit cards, online payments, EFTs and wires. All of the revenue for the day is collected and verified. We then post the deposits to the cash book and the revenue to the corresponding line in the general ledger. We also account for every payment to vendors and employees, whether it be in the form of paper check, ACH or wire payment. These payments are again posted to both the cash book and the general ledger. The treasurer's office is also responsible for investing city funds in such a manner to maximize yields while maintaining liquidity. And something I just wanted to note here, I was really excited about when I looked at these numbers, due to the rising interest rates and the moving and shifting of the money to the, into the higher yield accounts, the investment income for the general fund only has more than doubled in FY '24. So we went from 1.77 million in FY '23 to 3.4 million in FY '24. That was really exciting to see. That's just general fund. A couple of the goals and objectives I just wanted to highlight for FY- A couple of the goals and objectives I just wanted to highlight for FY twenty-five would be mainly the last two bullet points under goals and objectives. Discussions with the finance director regarding the implementation of the treasurer's cash management module within Munis to post treasurer's receipts more efficiently. Thank you. Basically, right now, we have a cashbook and a general ledger, and we have to post, you know, the money to the cashbook, we have to post the money to the general ledger. If we were to combine this, you know, we could streamline the whole process. The, the cashbook and the, and the ledger currently do not talk to each other, so there's room for error or, you know, discrepancies, whereas if we could implement this module, which I believe we have, again, we just started talking about it, then the, then the systems will actually be one and the same, and we won't have to reconcile the bank statement to the cashbook and the cashbook to the ledger. It would just be one recon monthly and it would just streamline the whole process. I think that would be an amazing, amazing thing to do, but it's not going to be an easy feat. It's going to take a team of people, mostly probably will have to heavily rely on finance for that, so we need to wait for them to be ready. The other goal I had was to do a real deep dive into the credit card fees. More and more people using credit cards. Cash is almost nonexistent. We probably go to the bank once or twice a week now with cash. The checks are run daily through a remote deposit machine, but, but the cash, there's hardly any cash anymore. It's all credit card. So I really need to, again, do a deep dive and look at the fees and the costs, percentage-wise versus transactional fees, different merchants. We have probably four or five different merchants right now for about seven different departments. So I really need to do a thorough, comprehensive analysis of that. So that's, those are my two big objectives for FY twenty-five. As far as the actual budget numbers for my department, I don't think anything has really changed significantly, or at all. Tax title advertising. We somehow, last year with the change of staff, it didn't get budgeted for, so we had to put it back in the budget this year, five thousand.
Thank you. I, I saw Ms. Friedman's head nodding in agreement, how they're streamlining that would be helpful. Are there any questions from the council? Yes, Council Pozniewski.
Sorry, thank you. Kristin, you did talk about the, the credit card fees. I know that, that's, that's a roller coaster ride. You explained it very well. The question is, my question is, do you make the decision on which departments get what credit card machines, or does the department heads, each of them, do they negotiate their own credit card fees, fee machine fees?
I, I believe it's, it's a joint effort. When I had come here, I've been here just a little over a year, most departments were already established with the, with the machines and the merchants, so I haven't had any changes or any, anything new happening with that, except getting the bills every month. So, yeah, that's, that's part of what I have to look at, is, is who's in charge of actually just making these decisions and how the decisions were made in the past versus how they're going to be made going forward.
It does take away from the, from the money that's made by the city by doing that, too.
Right, yes.
On the company.
Absolutely, yes. Some companies charge a percentage based on the revenue that we take in, as well as a transactional fee. And then the, the card themselves, you know, like American Express versus, you know, MasterCard, I think American Express is a three point five percent flat rate, whereas, you know, Visa, MasterCard are on a sliding scale, you know. But, again, these, these are all things that I really have to do a big, a big analysis on, yeah.
Glad to hear that. Something that caught my eye, and I just don't understand the, the meaning of it, the, what is a tax foreclosure service and why was it zero in twenty-four and now it's five thousand dollars? I don't understand what service that, how that works.
The tax foreclosure service is, is basically just advertising for the liens. Every time we, we put a lien on a property, we need to advertise, and that, that's the line that kind of got dropped from the, from the budget last year by mistake with the, with the turnover in, in my department, yeah, yeah.
Right, very good. And the other thing that I just scratched my head at was, I saw on the cherry sheets, the, there's been money added to, to the school departments cherry sheets? Is that something that's normally done, that money gets added to it rather than taken away or negotiated? I know that-
What, what, what line in particular?
Page three sixty-nine. If you're looking, if it's at the under-school choice, go about two-thirds of the way down, number fifty-six forty-three, there's an increase for school choice and there's also an increase for the charter schools. You don't usually see an increase, that's the, just scratching my head-
I'll let Anna take this one. So those are the assessments that the city pays. So the, an increase in charter schools would mean that the, the formula that is provided, so there's a formula, so when students that are Salem residents go to a charter school, we're reimbursed on a decreasing sliding scale for the costs associated with those students, our, like, our education aid follows the student, and so the first year, I believe, is a hundred percent, and then I believe it's, I always mix this up, whether it's, it's a hundred sixty-four, I think it might be a hundred sixty, forty, I have to refresh my memory. And so, but then after they have, after that third year, there, we don't receive reimbursement anymore, and so if that's going up, it likely means that a couple of things, we either have, we may have students who are further in their sort of tenure at the charter school, and so we're not getting reimbursed for them, so our assessment that we're paying sort of back, that goes to the charter school, it goes to the state, but it's related to reimburse the charter school, increases. And so it just depends on where the, sort of where students are kind of in their tenure. So you'll see that we get, on the cherry sheet, we get a charter school reimbursement, and then we also pay the assessment that's supposed to help offset that.
So it's just sort of a guessing game, basically, as, as you're trying to, as-
Yeah.
Things move around with bodies.
We won't know, that's why we rely on seeing the cherry sheet, cherry sheets published by the state when the governor files their budget, so that we can see what the estimates are. We can kind of rely on some data from the school based on they should have a general idea of where students are enrolled and if they're on, you know, no longer, if they're not enrolled with the Salem public schools in, in the district. We won't necessarily know until we see the, the cherry sheets, and sometimes the state will toggle exactly how they're implementing that formula, and so we rely on the cherry sheet to see if they've made any, made any manual adjustments, so to speak, during that budget cycle.
And the schools benefited from that, that's-
Well, the, the assessment, the assessment is an appropriation the city pays out of the city's side of the general fund, so the school, that is an assessment that just gets, excuse me, gets paid directly back up to the state, and on the revenue side, which isn't seen in the book but is seen in our revenues, that, the money that comes in for the charter school reimbursement is just part of sort of the general fund resources that get budgeted against, so if that is higher, that helps with any funding requests from the school in any given year.
Okay, thank you.
And also, Ms. Freeman, I think you had your hand raised, did you want to comment on the tax foreclosure and, I think I saw your hand, I might have been mistaken, while, I think while Council Pozniewski was speaking?
Just a quick note on that. Last year, the council approved, we had requested to set up a new tax title revolving fund, which is best practice for managing tax title services, and when that was set up inadvertently due to transition, more funding was backed out of the budget than should have been moved into that fund, and we had, under statute, there's only certain things that are allowed to be paid for out of that fund, so we noticed that this year, and this is to remedy what was inadvertently decreased last year.
Great, thank you for that. Also, for, for the councilor's knowledge, we will be voting on, two, three, four, eight items in this section, so we'll, we're going to be starting with the general administration, and then when we switch out of this section, I'll make note of it, but we will be in section seven. Wow. Are there any further questions? Yeah, okay, so the general administration for the treasurer is on page three hundred and fifty-seven. Councilor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the treasurer general administration budget personnel line item of two hundred ninety-three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars, a expenditure line item of one hundred thirty-two thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars for a treasurer general administration department total of four hundred twenty-five thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars.
Second.
Councilor Stott motions to approve the, excuse me, the personnel budget in the amount of two hundred ninety-three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven, and the expenditures total in the amount of one hundred thirty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for a treasurer general administration department total of four hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars, seconded by Councilor Pozniewski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see three hands plus my own, so the matter carries, four to none. Great, and now we go to long-term debt service, and that is on page three hundred and sixty, just a couple pages up, with a lengthy budget summary on page three hundred and sixty-one that goes to three hundred and sixty-three.
So the debt principal did go up here by six and a half percent, but the interest payments are going down by five percent, which is always good, paying more on principal, less on interest.
And if I could just add, just to give some clarity on why there are so many line items, but only one or two lines proposed for FY twenty-five. Several years ago, the budgets used to be filed for every individual project with a separate budgeted line, which is actually very challenging for sort of transparency purposes, actually, it almost makes it more confusing to follow, and so for budgeting purposes, the lines are all combined together, both principal and interest, for general fund-related principal and interest. However, we do have a, the financing schedules are included in the book, so if anyone was, is interested to see by individual project what the financing looks like for those projects and what the individual debt service principal and interest are, that's included in section six of the book, but for budgeting purposes, after next year, I believe, you'll only see the two lines where we rolled them all together for efficiency.
Great, thank you for that clarity. Any questions from the council? Okay, so the budget summary, and it's just expenditures, the total is on page three hundred and sixty-three. Councilor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the treasurer long-term debt services expenditures of eight million seven hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Councilor Stott moves to approve the treasurer's long-term debt services for the total of expenditures, which is also the department total, in the amount of eight million seven hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars, seconded by Councilor Pozniewski. All in favor? At the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries, four to none. Next, we are moving on to page three hundred and sixty-four, short-term debt service.
So the short-term debt has decreased overall by over ten percent, which just means we're borrowing less, which is always good.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? And again, this is page three hundred and sixty-four. Councilor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the treasurer short-term debt service expenditure line item, which is also the department total of two hundred and fifty-one thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars.
Second.
Councilor Stott moves to approve the treasurer short-term debt service expenditures, which is also the department total, in the amount of two hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars, seconded by Councilor Pozniewski. All those in favor? Let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries, four to none. Next, we have page three hundred and sixty-six, which is the Essex Tech, sorry, let me get my page, Essex Tech Assessment, and yes, the budget summary is page three sixty-six.
So our assessment went down this year by about five percent, and that was basically just due to a decrease in enrollments.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council? No? Councilor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Essex Tech Invoc assessment expenditure line item, which is also the department total of two million four hundred thirty thousand dollars, two million four hundred thirty thousand seventy-six dollars.
Second.
Councilor Stott moves to approve the Essex Tech Assessment expenditures, which is also the department total, in the amount of two million four hundred and thirty thousand and seventy-six dollars, seconded by Councilor Pozniewski. All those in favor? At the record show, I see three hands plus my own. Motion carries, four to none. Next, we have page three hundred and sixty-eight, which is the state assessments, which is the cherry sheet.
So the assessments due to the state did increase by five percent. I know we're not looking at revenues here, but I feel that I almost have to say that the increase in revenue we're going to get here is going to offset, you know, we're going to get more revenue that we're going to, to pay out in expenditures, so we're still ahead of the game, I think.
Great, and Ms. Friedman? And then just to provide some clarity, the assessments that are noted here are as of the House budget that was filed in early April, since we didn't have the Senate numbers when we went to print. Technically, no matter what the appropriation is for these, we are required to pay them whatever the ultimate cherry sheet number is when we get the final budget, so sometimes those can change, and so no matter what gets appropriated, they're basically called unappropriated items because we are required to pay them no matter what the state ultimately says they are. And if there's any questions about any of these specific ones that we pay, there are other items on the cherry sheet, but we don't qualify for all of them, which on the assessment side is, is good because that's less money out the door, but we can, we have the manual if there's any questions about these items.
Great, thank you. Council Maricello.
Thank you, Chair. Anna, can you, or can somebody talk about the special ed item and the big jump there? So the, I'm just going to pull up one thing. Ah, okay, so it's for special education, and I always pull up the manual to make sure I can explain this. Just a quick second. So the assessment is to partially reimburse the state for providing special education needs education to children enrolled in state hospital schools, so these are like the, the chapter seventy, seven sixty-six schools. So the cost that each municipality is charged is the average per pupil cost of education within the school district multiplied by a formula which is the FTE equivalent of resident pupils served by the state, and the current year charges are for pupils served in the prior school year, so we're getting charged for pupils that were served last year in, in those schools. And so how, how it goes about, DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, determines a per pupil cost for each school system based on enrollments and costs in the prior school year, and then those costs get certified, and then we are charged for that, that gets, we pay that in the fourth quarter of our local aid distribution, so when they send our local aid, they, they take that off for us to pay back for the prior year. So how many students does that represent? I don't even know what-
I would have to, I would have to check, we'd have to check with, with D R to see how they're calculating that, to see why that has increased by so much. It's still, it's a small amount comparatively with some of the other items that were assessed, but it did grow quite a bit, so I'm not sure if that's equal to one additional student or more students that were enrolled in 2020- or more students that were enrolled in 2023.
Okay.
2022, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Okay, so this is again the state assessment that's on page 368. Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the treasurer's state assessment cherry sheet expenditure line item, which is also the department total of $10,883,575.
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Stott moves to approve the state assessments cherry sheet expenditures in the amount of, which is also the department total, in the amount of $10,883,575. Seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All those in favor? Let the records show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries four to none. Next, we have on page 370. Contributory retirement. Up next. Any discussion on that?
I can provide some feedback on this. So the increase is pursuant to the funding schedule to get the city's retirement system fully funded, which means for in prior years where the costs associated with the ongoing obligation to pay for retirees was, has not been fully funded, but based on the schedule to be fully funded by 2032, it requires an appropriation increasing around 5.5% annually. You'll see that this is a little bit less than that, 5.38%, and that is because we are offsetting for some fringe costs on grants where the city is not obligated to sort of directly appropriate for those costs. So that's why we're still meeting the funding schedule obligation, but it is a little bit less because we're able to reduce that to accommodate those fringe costs for employees that are paid on grants.
Thank you. Counselor Marsillo.
Thank you, Chair. The South Essex Sewerage District, is that split among all of the members, or how is that done?
So each member of the retirement board, or each member of the contributory retirement system has their own individual assessment that rolls up to meet the funding schedule obligations. And so this piece is only for the city asylum's own employees and the other members, they pay in assessment, Housing Authority, SESD, I think I'm forgetting, I'm forgetting another entity, Essex Tech, they pay in for their own, their own members.
I don't understand.
So the, I may have misinterpreted the question. Could you say your question one more time, just to?
If they're employees of the South Essex Sewerage District and they retire, I'm assuming that's what this is. No.
This funding is only for city's, the city's employees. Every employer unit that's part of the system has their own contribution into the system. So SESD has an appropriation in their budget for their employees. Their budget is funded by all the different communities that are part of the district, but this is not the payment for those employees.
Okay, okay.
Clear spot.
Yeah, we, if this might help, we get, there's a letter that comes from the board every year and it lists all of the member units of the, of the system and what everyone's assessment is to pay in to, to make progress on fully funding toward their, sort of their membership that is part of the system overall.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so again, this is contributory retirement on page 370. Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to recommend approval for contributory retirement expenditures treasurer line item, which is also the department total of $15,734,481.
Second.
Counselor Stott, motions to approve the contributory retirement expenditures, which is also the department total, in the amount of $15,734,481. Seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see three plans, three hands plus my own. The matter carries four to none. Then next, we have page 372, Medicare. And again, this is just expenditures. Any discussion or comments?
We may, we may have skipped a line that I didn't notice earlier, the non-contributory pensions on page 371. There's a small line for $10,625.
Yes, yes, that is a budget summary for a non-contributory pensions.
Correct.
Thank you.
This is for a sort of a legacy, we provide a pension benefit for one non-contributory retiree that's retiree from a program that no longer exists. So this is a pension payment that's paid weekly to this one retiree. This is the appropriation, which is not increasing for next year.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the treasurer's non-contributory pension expenditure line item, which is also the department total of $10,625.
Second.
Counselor Stott, motions to approve the non-contributory pensions expenditures, which is also the department total, in the amount of $10,625. Seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. Motion carries four to none. Now on to page 372, Medicare.
This is for, this basically goes up 6% every year, based on prior year, number of employees. It's a city's share or match of Medicare. The employees pay out of their checks 1.45% and the city matches that 1.45%.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, Counselor Stott.
I'm just making sure this is all expenditure line item. It says personnel, okay, on the second page. It's all expenditure, right?
It's technically all expenditure. It's because accounting-wise, it's budgeted 5-1, which is technically personnel, but it's only, it's not tied to a specific personnel line, so it's technically, it can be voted as expenditure, that's okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the treasurer Medicare budget expenditure line item, which is also the department total of $1,465,528.
Second.
Counselor Stott moves to approve the Medicare expenditures, which is also the department total, in the amount of $1,465,528. Seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? The record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries four to none. Next, we move on to page 374. And this is municipal insurance. Any comments or?
So this line is for our non-health insurance coverage. So this is for things like personal property, professional liability, what am I forgetting? Vehicle, auto insurance. And so we're insured through MYA and the increase next year was based as a 3% increase and we do back out some amounts that the school reimburses for their portion of that premium.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the treasurer's municipal insurance expenditure line item, which is also the department total of $345,865.
Second.
Counselor Stott, motions to approve the treasurer's municipal insurance expenditures, which is also the department total, in the amount of $345,865. Seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? Let the records show that I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries four to none. And next, we are moving on to Section 28. And this starts on page 300, oh, sorry, 642, and it's the sewer enterprise funds for the treasurer.
This is, let me see, the SESD assessment has gone down by 1.84%. I'm not really 100% sure why. That was, it's just their determination based on their estimated costs. That's our share.
I forgot to pull this up, but the, our assessment went down because our share overall with the other members decreased just due to the sort of volume of usage, basically. And I forgot to pull it up to have it tonight, but the, overall, the assessments are going up, but our share of that assessment decreased because of usage, I believe.
Okay, thank you. And again, we're in Section 28, page 642 here. Okay, any questions, Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you, Chair. Could we get those numbers, the usage numbers? That would be really good. Thanks.
I was waiting for you to get the numbers. Okay. Thank you. So she'll follow up with the numbers, I guess, this question. Okay, great. Any questions from the council? No, Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the treasurer sewer assessment expenditure line item of, which is also the department total of $4,644,596.
Second.
Counselor Stott, motions to approve the treasurer's expenditures for the sewer enterprise SESD assessment funds, which the expenditures are also the department total, in the amount of $4,644,596. Seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries four to none. And for clarity, this is one of four items that we're voting on in Section 28. The next is, the next page on 600, page 643, the sewer enterprise long-term debt. Any discussion or comments?
I just wanted to reiterate what Anna said about the general fund debt, all the individual debt schedules being rolled up into two lines. That's what we did here with the sewer enterprise debt as well. We just rolled it into one debt principal line and one long-term interest line. And all those other lines will roll off in a year, next year, I think, or the year after. So here, the principal did increase, but the interest payments did decrease, as the same as the general fund.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? No, Counselor Stott, again, that's page 643 and page 644.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the treasurer's expenditures for the sewer enterprise long-term debt line item, which is also the department total of $1,751,813.
Second.
Counselor Stott, moves to approve the sewer enterprise long-term debt for the treasurer's expenditures, which is also the department total, in the amount of $1,751,813. Seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The motion carries four to none. Next, we have page 646, the short-term debt.
The interest here on the, the short-term notes did increase. We must have borrowed a little bit more and I'm sure the interest rates probably went up a little bit. Anna?
Yeah. Okay, sorry. Just a quick note, because this will be relevant to the water line for this as well, general fund, water and sewer, when we're calculating for the cost for short-term, we're just looking at the amount that we're borrowing for the short-term note that's general fund versus water versus sewer. And then that can toggle year over year, just based on the projects that are happening at that time and then based on the interest rates. And so this is just calculated off of the totals that are needed for the short-term notes for interest, based on the types of projects that are occurring.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? No, Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the sewer enterprise short-term debt treasurer expenditure line item, which is also the department total of $55,256.
Second.
Counselor Stott, motions for the sewer enterprise short-term debt treasurer's expenditures, which is the department total, in the amount of $55,256. Seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries four to none. On the next page, 647, we have the sewer enterprise insurance deduction expenditures.
These are the deductibles we pay on claims. This is kind of hard to estimate. It's based on the number of claims filed. We put in the same as this year. So no change.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? No, Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the sewer enterprise insurance deduction treasurer expenditure line item, which is also the department total of $10,000.
Second.
Counselor Stott, motions for the sewer enterprise insurance deduction expenditures for the, for the amount of $10,000, which is also the department total. Seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? The record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries four to none. Okay, and next, we are going to Section 29. And these are the water enterprise funds and we will start for the treasurer, and we will start on page 664.
Are we looking at the long-term debt? Okay, sorry. So here, the debt, same as sewer and general fund, we've consolidated all of the projects into two lines, one for principal, one for interest, with a combined increase of 2.94% for FY '25.
Great, thank you. And yes, this is the long-term debt, which is page 664 and 665. Any questions from the council? No, seeing none. Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the water enterprise long-term debt treasurer expenditure line item, which is also the department total of $2,401,729.
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Stott, moves for the water enterprise long-term debt expenditures, which is also the department total, in the amount of $2,401,729. Seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries four to none. Then on the next page, 666, we have the short-term debt.
Total short-term debt increased by approximately 10% as did sewer enterprise, same for water.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? No, Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the water enterprise short-term debt treasurer expenditure line item, which is also the department total of $79,415.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Stott, motions for the water enterprise short-term debt expenditures, which is also the department total, for $79,415. Seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? The record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries four to none. Next, we have on page 667, the water enterprise. Next, we have on page 667, the water enterprise, the Salem-Beverly Water Supply Board Assessment expenditures.
So this assessment is based on water usage. This is our, our share, which appears to have gone up by 4%. I don't have the backup, does Anna do?
Just some additional information, the worksheet that I received from the Water Supply Board indicates that of the, Salem is responsible for 56.82% of the overall assessment for FY '25, and Beverly is responsible for 43.18%. So our assessment is 3 million, 140, 3.1 million, Beverly's assessment is 2.392, based on the.
Thank you. Any questions from the council on this? Seeing none. Counselor Stott, and again, this is page 667.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the water enterprise SBWSB assessment treasurer expenditure line item, which is also the same as the department total of $3,147,612.
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Stott moves for approval of the water enterprise SBWSB assessment expenditure funds, which is also the department total, in the amount of $3,147,612, seconded by Counselor Proznooski. All in favor? At the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The motion carries, four to none. And then we have on page, the next page, 668, the water enterprise insurance deductible expenditures.
There was no change in this. Again, this is based on claims by, filed by individuals, based on the city, the city app fault water backup, right? So if, if there was a flood in somebody's yard due to a pipe bursting on the city streets or something, I'm assuming, they would file a claim, and we would pay out on that.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council? No, seeing none. Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the water enterprise insurance deductible treasurer expenditure line item, which is also the department total of $5,000.
Second.
Counselor Stott moves to approve the water enterprise insurance deductibles expenditures, which is also the department total, in the amount of 5,000, seconded by Counselor Proznooski. All in favor? At the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The motion carries, four to none. Great, and I'd like to thank Ms. Lumper for being here, for your time, for all your incredibly hard work. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And could I have a motion for a two-minute recess? All in favor? Okay, we will be back in two minutes. Hi, welcome back, everyone. And we will be moving on to finance, which is in section five, and the budget summary is on page 342. And we have Anna Friedman here.
Thank you so much, Chair Merkel. I just want to begin by thanking the fantastic finance department team, Justin McCutcheon, James LeBlanc, Elizabeth Smith, and Michael Walsh, who do great work every day, and all had important roles in putting together the annual budget for our department and as the city, and for the city as a whole. In particular, I want to thank Justin and James, who spent some late nights and weekends with me to get the budget filed. I also would want to just thank the finance department heads that were here tonight. They all do a great job, and I'm lucky to have them, and I believe so is the city. We all work really collaboratively to ensure sound fiscal management for the city. In addition to the annual budget process, the city's finance department is responsible for all financial and accounting matters citywide. We ensure that funds are managed consistent with mass general laws, federal standards, and other best financial practices. A couple, a couple specific things I just wanted to highlight. For FY '25, the major increase in the budget is to add a new role, a grants coordinator, budget analyst. This role would provide technical grant assistance, such as grant writing, and support efforts to identify and draw down as many grant funding opportunities as possible. On the downstream side, that role would also assist in managing grant reconciliations, ensuring proper drawdowns by departments, and other critical grant management responsibilities. This will help the city have a more centralized, coordinated, and strategic approach to grant management, particularly when there are so many federal funding opportunities currently available. We believe this role will very quickly pay for itself in terms of the financial, the additional resources brought into the city. Regarding some initiatives that are currently underway, the finance department is working with human resources to complete a compensation study, which Amir Pangalo has mentioned on a couple occasions during budget hearings, which will develop a new classification and compensation plan for full-time, non-union employees. We're also very diligently working to coordinate the spend-down of allocated ARPA funds to ensure we comply with all spending deadlines as ARPA winds down. Additionally, for FY '25, we're looking to move our personnel budgeting processes from manual spreadsheet work into our accounting system, where we can pull information directly from the city's payroll system to help build the budget for FY '26, and reduce potential errors in personnel budgeting, which we never want to have happen. And last, but certainly not least, we're working on a comprehensive debt analysis and cleanup effort, so that we can best project for debt, so we could best project financing scenarios for the high school building project, and also leverage any available existing proceeds for ongoing projects to reduce the overall debt burden, and thus reduce the potential tax impact on Salem residents going forward. So that's another area where we are spending a lot of our focus right now. I'm happy to talk about any other changes, or any other initiatives, or anything else that there may be questions about. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I also want to give a big thank you to you and your team, just, you know, incredible, yeah, it's, it's just incredible work that you do. And also, Justin, yes, so much appreciate you and James, and everybody that is, that works really hard, you know, for everything that you, that you just went over. Appreciate it. Any questions from the council? No, seeing none. Okay, so the budget summary is on page 342. Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the finance budget personnel line item of $462,168, expenditure line item of $128,586, for a department total of $590,754.
Second.
Counselor Stott moves to approve the finance personnel budget in the amount of $462,168, the expenditures in the amount of $128,586, for a finance department total of $590,754, seconded by Counselor Proznooski. All in favor? At the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries, four to none. Okay, and last, we have section 27, which is the budget transfer out from the general Give us one second to get over to that. And yes, for clarity, this is done for best practice to avoid the fluctuating needs of retirement funds, and so it's not to affect, you know, the department's bottom lines, and it goes to the retirement stabilization fund for vacation and sick time buybacks for retirees, and also to our Salem 2026 fund. Ms. Friedman, if you have anything else, yeah, to, to add to that, in the importance of this?
Just a quick note on the transfer to retirement stabilization. There is this, there has been an annual capitalization, as Chair Merkel noted, into that fund. From time to time, we may come back to the council for additional funds, just based on what we're projecting for retirement. Sometimes we know about them in advance, sometimes we don't. We haven't had to come back for about two years for a mid-year. It's possible we may need one this year, but we, based on current projections, we were comfortable reducing the appropriation going into FY '25, but we continue to monitor that as folks retire and payouts are processed. And then the transfer to the Salem 2026 fund, that's been occurring for several years as the city prepares for Salem 400, and that is planned to increase as we are getting closer, of course, to that date.
Thank you. And I understand the employee has moved from part-time to full-time for, for, for that as well, to help with the, the preparations, which I'm looking forward to. Any questions from the council? No, seeing none. Okay, so this is on, again, this is section 27, and it's just an expenditure. Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the budget transfer out of general fund expenditure line item, which is also the department total of $580,000.
Second.
Counselor Stott motions to approve the budget transfer out of the general fund for a total for expenditures, which is also the department total, in the amount of $580,000, seconded by Counselor Proznooski. All in favor? At the record show, I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries, four to none. And again, thank you. Thank you to the finance department and all your incredibly hard work. I, have I covered everything? Okay, great, and thanks, thanks to the councilors and the A&amp;F committee. Can I entertain one more motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor? Great, good night, everyone, and look forward to the crosswalk painting.